Sue Rapley, Marlboro. Vin? Is Vinny on yet? No? Okay, Scott?
Scott Flair, Marlboro.
Judy?
Judy Benson, Clark, Marlboro.
Rob?
Rob Schottl, Hebron.
Jess?
Jessica Dapsis, Hebron.
Kathleen? No, I think she's going to be coming in late. Dave? No, Dave? Joe?
Joe O'Connor, Hebron.
Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. And Vin, I see you just joined?
Vin Colonna, Hebron.
Okay. Did anybody just join that I did not? Oh, no. Okay. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, number three is the election of the Board of Ed Treasurer. Dave's official last day is on June 30th. I believe if we go through elections right now, we may have to dismiss him as treasurer first before we elect a new one. Correct me if I'm wrong. Anyone?
Stephanie, I think you could make the appointment for starting July 1st and that way it follows his last day of June 30th rather than having to remove him from that. We just need to make sure we have a treasurer available and know who that will be for any signatures that need to happen over the summer.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Anyone want to nominate someone for treasurer?
I will nominate, I'd like to nominate Jessica Dapsis if she would so kindly take the role.
I will take the role. That's fine.
We need a second and then a discussion. But I'm glad Jessica could hear that.
But thank you for correcting that.
Put you on the spot there, Jess, sorry.
That's all right. I know where you live.
Vin Colonna, second. Did you get that?
All in favor? I did. I'll go down the list for all in favor. Sue? Yes. Vin?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen has not joined us yet. Dave is not here. Joe?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Is Jean? Is Jean present? Okay. Just wanted to double check. I did do a second call for anybody who wasn't here, but I just wanted to make sure she was not on the call. Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Jessica. We'll have you starting on July 1st.
Great, thank you.
All right, next, public comments. Number four, key Bernandover Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Ed public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Are there any public comments? I know public comments at this time. Okay, we're going to move on to the addition or deletion of agenda items. Does anyone have any items to add or delete? Not at this time? Okay, moving on to student representative reports. Are student reps here? Okay, moving on, those student representative reports. Next, we have the board chair report. Bear with me, this is the end of the year, so there are a few items here. So, I'd like to begin with a farewell to Dr. Law. "We thank you for your dedication to the Region 8 schools. We have appreciated your tremendous work ethic and improvements you have made to our school system. We recognize the difficulties that COVID has placed on our schools and commend you for the handling of the crisis. As a token of our appreciation for your work, we have sent you a gift from the Board of Education. We wish you the best in your future endeavors." This is David Gastanian's last regular board meeting. Dave has served on the Ram Board of Ed for six years, serving as treasurer for the last five. Thank you, David, for your committed service to the Ram schools. His last day is June 30th. "Congratulations to the class of 2020. Although your senior year did not end the way you had hoped and dreamed of, we hope that you are finding meaningful closure to your high school career. We are proud of you and your accomplishments. You are a talented class, and we look forward to following your successes in the future. Be safe during your celebrations, good luck in your future endeavors, and have a wonderful summer." "I want to extend a sincere thank you to the staff and parents for supporting our students academically and emotionally this year. Your dedication and ability to adapt to the challenges you face during this difficult time resulted in a 96% student engagement for both high school and middle school. That is an outstanding testament to your caring and professionalism. We wish you a restful summer." Now for some board business. On May 28th, the Board made a motion to interview at least three search firms for a new superintendent, and we plan to start the process soon. The Board will be receiving training from CAE on communication and board responsibilities on June 22nd. We hope everyone has a safe and relaxing summer. Okay, next, the report of the superintendent. Pat?
Thank you very much, and I do want to thank the Board for allowing me to be the superintendent in Region 8 and being a part of an amazing community. And I am thrilled that we are leaving the district, at least I'm leaving the district, in what I believe is a very positive place with social-emotional learning well in hand and focus for the district with a full-time A.D., our technology special ed, and curriculum opportunities and a wonderful place for our students. So, thank you very much for the opportunity. I do want to also mention that today was the 8th grade moving up ceremony, and I believe you can see with my screen share here, one of the pictures that I took today at the ceremony. Dr. Serusi and Carrie Ann Bell were out there along with Stephanie Starr and Kelly Truve and many, many of our teachers and staff to wish the students good luck in moving up to the high school. As a matter of fact, I don't think everyone wore sunscreen and a few people got a nice glow today. The students were thrilled to see the staff and the administration and lots of smiling faces, proud parents and proud students. So, I just want to mention that it was a wonderful celebration for them today, and we are looking forward to a great graduation for our seniors tomorrow over at the Lions Fairgrounds, starting at 9:00.
Okay. 8.2, possible July graduation plans?
I would ask Scott Leslie to speak to any updates that he might have around July graduation plans.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, everybody. So, as Pat mentioned, we have our graduation, our kind of formal end-of-the-year graduation schedule tomorrow at the Lions Fairgrounds. This is going to be a graduation that is going to evolve over many hours. We have 40 students scheduled per hour. We have six-hour sessions where students will come in. Our goal was to provide each family with the opportunity to see their child walk across the stage with their cap and gown. We have our stage, we have a tent, we have everything set up at the Lions Fairgrounds. So, unfortunately, it will be a different type of environment, but every parent will be able to watch their child cross the stage. In my discussions with the seniors, the feeling was is that we had hoped that, and we still hope, that by late July, we may be able to do something more familiar to them. Their goal really is to be able to have a graduation ceremony with all the students together. So, right now, we're still on hold. I'm still in contact with the senior class officer, so we'll see where the regulations move us. We decided that because so many colleges are starting earlier than they typically do so they can get students on campus and begin the process of kind of quarantining their own students as they arrive, that it wasn't practical to be looking at August for a date. So, we're probably going to have to really continue to look at a late July event if at all possible. So, as we speak right now, we have St. Fleming booked for July 28th for any prom that we might be able to hold, and we have Lions Fairgrounds booked for July 30th if we're able to hold the graduation ceremony.
Can I pause for a second and ask anybody who doesn't have their phones or computers muted to do so, and then open up for any questions for Scott regarding any of the celebrations planned? Sue? No questions. Vin?
I'm good.
Scott?
All set.
Judy?
I'm set as well.
Okay, Rob?
I'm good, thank you.
Jess?
I just had a quick question. I had heard there's a possibility of doing the junior prom in the fall. Is that a rumor or is that a truth?
Well, that's something that the juniors can consider. The challenge that the juniors are going to have is funding the prom. You know, typically, the classes fundraising activities are geared towards the senior year activities. So, we're going to have to, again, look at what's allowable, but two, look at what that might mean for them in terms of being able to then go on and fund all of the senior year activities. So, I think it's going to be a funding question when we get to that point, if we can schedule that.
Great, thanks, Doc.
Did Kathleen make the meeting yet? No? Okay, Joe?
No, I have no questions, but good job, Scott and Mike, for, as always, getting the kids through the graduation process. It's a lot of work, so thank you for, and this year, obviously, more daunting tasks. So, you know, thank you for all your hard work.
Great, thank you, Joe.
I'm all set. Thank you, Scott.
Stephanie, if I could just add one more thing. Our tradition with graduation has always been that a board member with a child graduating has the opportunity to hand the diploma to their child when they walk across the stage. And I've contacted our four board members with graduating seniors, and so we're welcoming them on to the stage when it's their child's turn to walk across the stage. So, we'll still be able to maintain that tradition. And to those of you with graduating seniors, congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, next, number nine, consent agenda. We have number 9.1, the approval of minutes, and 9.2, personnel actions. Are there any comments on the minutes? I think I'll just let you speak out if you have any corrections or additions to minutes.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
I'll second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I think I'm going to go down the line because there's some background noise. Sue? Yes. Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Is Kathleen here yet? No? Okay, motion passes. And personnel actions.
I do think, Stephanie, for each of these, it might be best for the Board to look at each one separately because they are each different.
Okay, we'll start with the first one being, do you want to go through them, Pat?
Sure. So, Todd Helwig would be the first one. That would fall under a request for a general leave. If you remember, earlier in the year, he had made the request to take the accelerated nursing program. The Board had made a decision around that leave. He is now just requesting a general leave, which is under Article 19 in the contract where he would be granted the general leave for the time period of January to December of 2021. During that time, he would have, he would not be getting his salary or health benefits, and he is requesting that leave. So, I don't know if we want to vote on that one and then go to the next one, or do you want me to go through all three of them?
I think we should go one at a time.
Okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
This is Joe. I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Helwig's request for leave of absence per the contract.
Second?
Second, Vin?
Any discussion? No discussion? Okay. All in favor? Sue? Want to take it to a vote? Yes.
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, motion passes.
Thank you. The next one is Jeremy Zarell. He left a little earlier this year due to a family need under Article 17, temporary disabilities and health and hardship leave. Under that leave article and Section A, it does say that a teacher who leaves shall not exceed in excess of one complete school year, except if that leave is granted during the school year. It may extend one complete school year immediately following the partial leave. Jeremy Zarell was granted partial leave this year. He is asking for the full year next year, and per the contract, that is something that we have done in the past and can grant this person.
Okay, so I'll make a motion?
This is Joe. I'll make a motion that we accept the Mr. Zarell's letter for leave of absence per the teacher's contract.
Second?
Second, Vin?
This is Jessica, second. Okay, we'll go, any discussion? And no discussion? All right, we'll bring it to vote. Sue? Yes. Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes.
The third request is from Sue Lynch. I did remove the letter from the website just because there was personal information on there and it needed to come down. But Ms. Lynch left leave from the district on December 2nd, 2018, for the rest of that school year. Much like Mr. Zarell was asking for and what you just approved, Sue Lynch asked to have her leave extended through this entire school year, which it was under Article 17 of the contract. She has not been able to be cleared by her doctor to return to work and is requesting of the Board that you hold her position one additional year. This would be falling under the ability under Article 19, general leave, to extend other leaves with or without salary for, to be granted by the Board for general leave. It is not a common practice that we hold positions for that long. You're talking two and a half years at this point that this person will have been out, but it is something that the Board can consider to do. And so, I leave that to the Board to discuss.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
This is Joe. I'll make the motion for discussion. I don't have anything in front of me per, what was her name?
Sue Lynch. I'm sorry.
Sue Lynch, per her request for additional leave of absence under the teacher's contract. General leave, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Rob will second.
Okay, opening up for discussion?
Pat, what does Sue Lynch teach?
She is a reading teacher at the middle school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a substitute covering her right now?
We hired somebody back luckily in early 2019, and that person has done a long-term subposition that year and has been under a one-year contract this year and will continue to be under another one-year contract next year. Unless this position is not granted for the leave, then we could consider hiring the person full-time on a permanent contract.
Stephanie? Vin? Just a question. What if the position is eliminated? Is there any repercussion that we've granted leave for the year and then all of a sudden the position gets eliminated because we don't need it?
Well, we definitely need it for next year. It's an important position to the middle school and to the district, and Dr. Serusi could speak to that if necessary. If the position, for some reason, did end up getting eliminated, we would do what we would normally do, and we would have to use our bumping rights with people with the proper certification to be eliminated.
And just a follow-up. If she wanted to come back, is there a length of time that, you know, were to get notified? Or could she say she wants to come back in a week and, you know?
No, we would need to be notified. We're right now having a one-year person that is under a one-year contract to fill this position, so she would be able to come back at the end of this yearly, an additional one year of leave.
Okay, that's all for me.
Any other questions? Or discussion?
Joe here. Are you allowed to tell us how long she's? I can't remember how long this person has worked in the district.
I don't have that in front of me, so I'm sorry. I don't have that information. I don't know if Michael Serusi has a ballpark on that one.
Let's see, twenty. So, over 13 years, over probably 13 to 15 years or more?
Thank you, Michael.
Any other question or discussion?
Stephanie, Joe here again. Is this the last, if we were to grant this, is this the last time she can use this as a request?
No, she could continue to request it year after year. She's falling under general leave, which is extended leave that the Board can grant. There's no time limit or number of times on it.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Any others? No? Okay. Going to bring it to vote? Sue? No. Vin?
Yes.
Doc?
No.
Judy?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Well, I think I'm going to have to abstain because I really don't have enough information here. You know, I want to do the right thing, but I don't have enough information. We're not in the Personnel Department, so I'm going to have to abstain.
And I'm a yes. Did Kathleen make it into the meeting yet?
She did. She just started. She just entered.
Hi, Stephanie. Hi, Pat. Everybody, sorry for being late.
That's okay. Were you able to hear the last discussion?
No, I did not catch all of that. Sorry.
Okay. So, at this point, I think we need to move on and say...
So, would Kathleen just be abstaining from that since she's joined the meeting at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I believe motion passed.
Can you summarize for me, Stephanie, how many, there was two?
We have two notes.
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five yeses, and two extensions.
Thank you. Yep, motion passes.
Okay. Okay, that brings us on to number 10, old business, and there is none. So, on to new business, number 11, and 11.1, review of expenditure and revenue reports. And that's Ava.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is well. So, as part of your packet, you'll find the expenditure and revenue report as of May 31st, 2020. I'm projecting a net favorable position of $831,901. In reviewing the information, the excess cost that we received, we realized $266,491 more than we budgeted. This additional money helps offset the other revenue shortfalls that have transpired due to COVID-19. So, when you look at the revenues in totality, we have a net positive position of $138,633. Please note that we are still refunding parking for spring, which totals about $1,700. And then, we are also returning, or refunding monies for food service, prepayments for non-returning students that are seniors and/or middle schools, students that are moving on to different high schools. And that total is $5,399. As you can see in the next report, which is Capital Improvement Fund, there is a net favorable projection of $8,539. $8,195 of that total is realized savings from the various projects. And then, the remainder of 343 was the savings realized to the double-locking entry project specifically. On the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, there is a net favorable projection of $89,158. This is directly related to the HVAC project. I caution, though, there is a change order for approximately $20,742. I caution, though, there is a change order for approximately $20,742 that is pending. We have not received it as of yet, but we are aware of it. The reason for the change order is because lightning protection needed to be put on the building. And then Unit A requires a railing to be installed for fall protection because of the placement and the size of the unit. OSHA requirements allow us or are dictating that we have to have the railing installed for this fall protection so that when an employee of the service provider comes up to work on the unit, there's no chance that that person will fall. In addition, we're going to be receiving a one-time payment in energy rebates totaling So that's good news. There are also in this packet is the other reports for pupil services expenditures. Does anyone have any questions on what I have just reviewed?
Stephanie, Joe here. I have some questions.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Eva, in the first line item of favorable position of 831,901, the next sentence says a net favorable projection takes into account the proposed savings from the proposed negotiation with our transportation vendor as well as COVID. Are you at liberty to talk about what that number is? I know we're talking in an executive session, or is there a dollar association with that right now that we can discuss? Yes or no?
No. We will discuss that in executive session.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is on the ECS money. This offsets other revenue shortfall due to COVID. What does that mean, please?
So that means that we didn't realize all our revenues, such as rentals, well, gate receipts, we did. We didn't have much intuition. Pay to participate, we didn't get fully. Our miscellaneous income was actually slightly lower. Student parking, we're refunding. A food service, we didn't take all of the $35,000 that we had budgeted for, for the electrical offset. So that's basically what that means.
This is Kathleen. I just want to ask, is that ECS money or excess costs?
It's excess cost money. ECS is something the towns get. Regional school districts do not get ECS money. So excess costs is for the high-cost special ed students.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Okay, and that's, so thanks, Kathleen, because I still get confused on those. So this money is, we've received this money from the state for those students? Is that correct?
If you look at page two of my packet, in the middle section, so you start with the levies are the first three, Hebron and Dover, Marlborough. The next, under the total or the subtotal of the levies, is the excess cost agency placement. We had budgeted $529,466 and we received to date $795,957.
My internet decided to quit. Let me, I have a couple more questions, but I got to get my back on the internet here. So if anybody else has one, Stephanie, go ahead.
Does anyone else have any questions, Eva?
Okay, I guess I got my internet back here. So the second, next question I have is, can you explain briefly the lightning protection for $20,000? What is involved with that, if you know?
So lightning protection is separate. Lightning protection just means that they have to ground the units and/or the building so that if lightning were to strike the building, it goes into the ground as opposed to blowing up the building or the unit. The majority of this is going to be the fall protection. It's a railing, actually, that needs to be installed. They're manufacturing it off-site to make sure that it's manufactured correctly. They're going to have to bring the rig back out and use the rigging to put it up onto the roof.
Okay, so it's the railing that's more for the $20,000?
Correct.
Okay, and when do you expecting the $15,000? Is that going to be in this year's budget, next year's budget? When are we expecting?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we received an email that said it is actually on its way. So we should be receiving the check within a couple of days, I would hope.
So is that $15,000 calculated into your 831?
No. So the $15,000 is actually going to, because it's a rebate, it's going to be credited back into the line item that it came out of for payment. So because it's in capital non-recurring, you're going to see a credit in that line, so it's going to lessen the expenditure in that line. And so when the project is all closed out, I believe the board will be able to reappropriate that money for future projects.
So that would be the money will go back into the 108 fund?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions? No? Okay, Eva.
11.2. So, well, I also have student activity. There was no real significant information in student activity. Then we also have the Chartwells. I don't know if anyone wanted me to go over Chartwells with them for the food service program. As was noted before, we do have some invoices that will be pending and coming out of the operating. I did receive the invoice today for the month of May, and it's actually $22,000 some odd dollars as opposed to the $24,000 that I estimated. So that's good news. The other not-so-good news is, so for two straight years, the district had Chartwells purchase tables under their investment plan. So that's actually a loan that we have to pay back to the vendor for purchase on our behalf. So when everything is said and done at the end of June, we will owe approximately $9,000 left to pay for the middle school and high school tables that were purchased. So that was just something I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of. I just found out about that today, so I am sharing that information with you today. Do you have any additional questions on those items?
Stephanie, Joe here. I have a question.
Go ahead.
So last month, we were told we're 50 grand, and now we're another nine grand, so a total of 60, is that correct?
Close, thereabouts, yes.
So I have some reservations about all of this. I articulated this last month. You know, we're getting dribs and drabs of all this stuff. Now we're getting another piece here. And again, I'm just pleased with the decision without the board, fully recognizing and understanding everything that went behind the decision to change this vendor out. I know there was some good reasoning, but for the record, I don't think that, at least for me, that we were well-versed on the overarching plan of what was really involved by removing Chartwells. I know there's been a lot of partnership with that organization over the past years, but for the record, I have a hard time with $60,000 right now being just, you know, the last two months coming up with telling all of us this. So I don't know how about the rest of the board feels, but I hope we can do a better job managing the next company.
I'm not sure I understand what was being stated.
Well, truthfully, last week, or last month, I was the one looking at the numbers. You guys didn't tell us that we're $50,000 in the hole with Chartwells in the process of going through and replacing this vendor. And then, again, you know, there seems to be a lot of other additional pieces, again, now with the tables. So we have to pay them out for this. Was that all factored into your equation when we were going through?
So the $50,000 was factored into and explained when COVID transpired. So in the April board meeting, I know I discussed that we were going to have to pay about $50,000 worth of invoices for April, May, and June for serving the students lunches. Going out to bid is USDA requires us to go out every five years to bid. Based on the information that was submitted, we, based on the fact that Witten's outbid Chartwells, we went with Witten's because they were the lowest bidder. So I'm not sure what one has to do with the other. I guess I really just don't understand the statement. I'm sorry.
Okay, so maybe I don't understand your statement. You're selling us that $50,000, because that's not what I heard last month, that $50,000 was for the lunches that we were providing to all the students.
Those are the invoices we get from Chartwells. Those are invoices for services provided. So they're serving our students meals, they're providing meals, and we have to pay for that. That's basically, so if you look into the note section of May, so April, May, and June, I put down what we should be receiving from the state as estimates, and I'm also putting down the estimate of the bill. So that's, so those are regular invoices that we receive for services rendered.
Okay, I'll move along with Stephanie.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, Eva?
Is she going to talk about the DADCO? Is that coming up, or are we not talking about that? We get any report from DADCO on billing?
So as was just stated to Mr. O'Connor, that that's going to be done in executive session?
Okay, we're going to move on to, are you done with 11.2, Eva?
No, actually, I did in this, so it's not part of the board policy, but I wanted to make sure, since it is a busy time of year for transfers, and especially in relation since most of these were COVID-related transfers, I wanted to submit some transfers so that the board was aware of them and that the board can make a decision on how they'd like to proceed with these. So I have broken it out, and my intention is to keep them separate moving like this forward, since that is what I'm hearing from individuals, that that's what they'd like to see. So the packet, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven transfers, all totaling Any additional transfers that will happen will happen at the August board meeting. So if you have any questions or want me to review them, please advise.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just to clarify, so $98,000 was for COVID, Eva?
So, correct. So you have the smallest one, which is $630.34, which was entry number, excuse me, entry number 61, journal entry number one, which was, we were taking money from propane and from the art, from the high school and middle school supplies and putting it into the high school art supplies so that they could purchase additional stuff due to the COVID teaching. Then we moved money from items from athletical officials so that we can get money put into place for items that we're preparing to try to purchase. Then you also have science equipment, same idea, so people are trying to purchase stuff that they know that they will need for COVID-related situations, distance learning. So that's what these are all basically about. And the last one, unfortunately, journal number 70, because we got a late bill from a basketball official, and for transportation, we had to reverse those two and needed to pay those two items out. We jumped again.
Any other questions? So Eva, you're going to be looking for a motion?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion. I'm hoping that the board approves the $98,000 worth of transfers.
Just one other question is, Stephanie, we did get a list of some of these, correct, Eva? What totals the $98,000? I know I saw something.
So it's a whole separate packet, so you'll get to see the journal entries themselves? You see what lines they came from and what lines they're going to?
I'm more interested in what is the equipment versus the line item, because I don't know what the line item really, I know what it applies to that.
You actually want to know what was purchased out of these line items for that dollar amount?
Yes, but didn't you send some of this to us already? Or is that different?
I may have. I'd have to relook at that again. My apologies.
I would like to see, just if you could, tie it all together. So for the $98,000, show us a list of what those line items tally up to. I would like to see that. Stephanie, that's up to you, if you want to, you know, has to have the board accept that, to ask Eva for a full list of that. So we at least tie it together for the transfers.
Okay, so you want me to take a vote on who wants a list? And put up the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I would pass the word of the motion, even so we can pass, you know, get this moved, and that's what she's looking for, the transfers. But I'd like to see a document that ties, you know, the $98,000 to the transfers.
So you're saying make a motion to pass it with a follow-up of a list of what was purchased?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so does someone want to make a motion to accept $98,756.86 for COVID purchases with a follow-up of a list of items?
So moved. Vin Colonna.
Seconded, Kathleen.
Okay, we'll go for a vote. Sue? Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so motion passes. Now we're on to 11.3, discussion and possible action regarding end of year spending from the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Stephanie. Like we discussed before, I do think that this might be a little bit of a messy conversation. So hopefully, we'll be able to maneuver through answering questions that the board might have and then be able to find a way to make motions that will allow for different transfers for items to occur. I'm not sure what it is that you, how you would like this to proceed, this conversation to proceed right now. I am sharing from my screen the overview. And again, we got two late items that were considered really important needs that I did send earlier today to the board. They are added on this sheet that I can explain a little bit more about. And there are other people on the line as well that if we need more details about those. are other people on the line as well, that if we need more details about them. But then, I, maybe if people have questions or whatever, I'm not exactly sure how you'd like to move through this.
Okay, I've given this a little bit of thought myself, hoping to streamline this a little bit. I think it would be, this is my suggestion, if anybody wants to pipe in who has other ideas, but if we went department by department, first, let me give a little bit of history about how we came up with the wants and needs. It was apparent in the last meeting that, that there are priorities that each department had, and through discussion, we requested that each department specify needs and wants to try to streamline it a little bit. So, what I was thinking is of going through each department and voting on the needs first, and then going through and seeing if we wanted to add any of the wants department by department. It would be a lot of voting that way. But that, that was my thought. Anyone have any other suggestions that might make it a little more simple?
No, I think that's a good plan of attack, Stephanie. I think that's fair.
Okay. All right. So, why don't we start with IT? IT had a need next to everything. I think it all had, was, is related to distance learning and COVID, and the possibility of, of continuing distance learning next year at some point. So, that everything on the list is in need. So, is there a motion to accept all of the needs for the IT department?
I motion that we accept all the needs for the IT department. This is Kathleen.
Second? Discussion? Okay, we'll go for a vote. Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That passes. So. On to...
Can I, can Stephanie, can we just have the total?
Sure thing. The total is $55,763.10. Should we have to amend that motion to put that amount in?
Probably a good idea.
Okay. I meant, I have amended the motion that we pass the IT need budget for $55,763.10.
So moved.
Who is that?
Kathleen. Kathleen, sorry.
That's all right. I didn't, I missed it. Okay. Discussion? Okay, we'll vote again. Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, motion passes. Not sure it's going to be as easy. We're going to need someone, I think, to calculate for some of the other ones.
All of the needs and wants are calculated on the spreadsheet that I'm showing per department.
Okay.
You see that?
Oh, I see that. Okay, very good. I see the column. Okay, next one I have is athletics. I'm just going in the order of my paperwork. I hope you guys don't mind, but I could, I could go in order of the paper, of the sheet, if you want me to. Okay, for athletics, the needs were cheerleading uniforms, football uniforms, face coverings. And I believe that was it. So, the motion would be to accept the athletic needs from the 1920 budget for the amount of $19,132. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the athletic needs of $19,132. That was Rob.
Second?
Second by Vin.
Discussion?
It's Kathleen. Can we talk a little bit about the wants column and see if that's a discussion, if people are interested in what else is wanted?
I think at the end, when we've gotten through all the needs, Kathleen, we're going to go back and look at the wants.
So, Stephanie, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Then, we're going to go through the wants, go through the needs column, and then decide if we're going to, so we're going to do separate votes for wants again. Is that what you suggested, and I missed? Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Joe, I have a question. I'd asked this question to Dr. Law, but I'd like to know, what is our direction with, with uniforms going forward? I know we're in the middle of a transition with mascot. But what is, what is the vision for the athletic department to going forward with uniforms? Are we going to be complying with most of our uniforms, which say RAM, or are we going to be putting Raptors on these uniforms? Because I think we can get very expensive with, with all of this going forward. So, is there a plan to, to unify with uniforms?
Can I ask Dan Trudeau to explain his vision for uniforms moving forward?
Hi, everyone. So, yeah, and I, I explained this the other night, so I'll try not to be too redundant. But even prior to knowing that we were going to be changing the mascot, you know, I had put together sort of a calendar that really covers over the next 10 to 12 years, that sort of outlines needs for uniforms. You know, I really have a philosophy that you replace varsity uniforms based on wear and tear, as well as quality of the uniform every three to four years is, is what's necessary. And, and then you recycle those varsity uniforms down to your subvarsity levels. So, really, you should get almost eight years out of the life of a, of a good quality uniform. So, right now, I have that planned out. The, the changing of the mascot, you know, I don't want to say that had no say in, in these requests, because certainly, you know, the cheerleading uniforms with, which say Sachem's on them, to me, cheerleading is a priority that we get that changed, as well as our football uniforms. But as far as moving forward, you know, on the front of most of our uniforms, we'll put either RAM or Raptors, and it would be RAM or Raptors on the back. Now, again, that's not something, you know, we're not replacing all uniforms right away. They're on a calendar. There's some uniforms that won't get replaced until 2023. Like, our boys' basketball team just got new uniforms this year, so they're, you know, they're not going to need new uniforms for another four years. And those uniforms, you know, any uniforms I did this year only say RAM on them. They don't say Sachem, so there's no need to replace them right now. I do think moving forward, you know, I don't anticipate us having to change from Raptors again in a, in another few years. I anticipate that being a long, a very long-term mascot solution. So, for me, and as, you know, part of sort of building the culture and, and, you know, building pride in our new mascot, I think it's important that Raptors do go on newly purchased uniforms. But again, it's not that we're now all of a sudden just going to start replacing uniforms to put Raptors on them. It's for the sake of replacing uniforms that need replacing, and when we replace them, they'll say both RAM and Raptors in different parts, whether it's on the back, the front, so forth. But, but I, I hope that did justice to kind of explaining my vision to, to uniforms and what I want to do with uniforms.
Yeah, that answers my question. Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Are there any other points of discussion or questions? Okay, I think at this point, we'll take a vote on the athletic need budget. So, Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, motion passes. Okay, next I have the health PE department. Needs of ping pong table, ping pong table nets and paddles, orienteering kits for middle school and high school, frisbees for high school, outdoor soccer balls, resistant band sets for middle school, high school, badminton rackets, badminton birdies, and high school PE nine courses, which are described for a total of $2,999.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the PE health needs for $2,930. That's Vin.
Second?
Rob will second.
Okay, discussion? No discussion or questions? We'll go to a vote. Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion passes. Okay, the next is CTE. Okay. This one is a little, little, Stephanie, say that again?
Would you like me to read through them for you, or?
Um, yes, this one's a little bit more difficult to, to decipher.
Right. So, we're looking for the developing child student materials that, which are textbooks. More textbooks is a need. The Simulade Full Body Adult CPR Mannequin. The Nitrate Gloves in different sizes. The Towlettes for wiping down due to COVID. The Simulade Smart Step Basic Mannequin with the iPad, which is the expensive item at $12,000, but needed due to the way that they're going to need to be teaching the CPR now. Vex Kits, which are for the updated curriculum for the project Lead the Way. Code to 10 Online Manual, which we added when we were advancing that class and tooling you again for continuing to advance our manufacturing courses. The total, and the total of those items is 26,655. There is, CTE has a joint increased request, along with facilities, that's on the spreadsheet for $12,507, that would allow for a doorway to be made. We are moving the EMT teacher and classrooms down to two classrooms that are side by side, but we need to be able to put a door between, in that wall, so that the teacher can properly socially distance the students and provide them with training areas for their mannequins and all the other things, and safely provide supervision as well. So, we really do need, they, they go together. So, I'm not sure if it would be the 26,655 plus the $12,507 for the door.
I'm going to be abstaining from this vote and discussion, but I will ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass CTE for 26,655 plus the $12,000 to install the door.
Second?
I'll second, Scott.
Discussion?
Just a question. What's the, the extra $16.96 in the wants? These, these amounts are so small. I'm not sure we need to have two votes on them.
Are you referring to the, the three on the top? The the first three items, Ben?
I was looking at the, the budget spreadsheet that she did, the 26,655 under the needs, and there's only another $1,600 on the wants.
So, Vinny, are you making the suggestion that you would vote for the CTE to be the $28,351 plus the $12,507?
Correct.
Pat, can you put up the other slide for, show us what, what's in that again, please?
This, this one? This, this is the CTE one? Those two wants are calipers, staples, mics for Chromebooks, oh, and surgical masks.
Yeah. So, I would like to amend, amend my motion that we pass the, the full $28,351 plus the $12,000 for the doorway. We'll just get this one done.
Can I second that, Stephanie?
Thank you, Kathleen. Are there any other discussions?
Can, can we just elaborate a little bit more on the doorway for $12,000? I have a little bit of a hard time understanding that cost for a doorway.
Can I ask Michael Schlehouffer, who I believe is on, as well as I do have the quote in front of me? So. In order to... Michael Schlehouffer, can you? Here it is. Found it. They have, so here's what that takes for the $12,507. We need to have drawings done, architectural drawings done. Those have to get approved. We have to modify and/or delete some of the mechanicals and move them. Construction containment, cutting and patching, the lintel and the supports, concrete blocking, framing materials, wall finishes, painting, trim and cove, door, door frame hardware, inspections and permits. The materials will cost about $5,000, $4,976. The labor costs $7,395, permit allowance of $135.
So, if I'm understanding this, you have two side-by-side rooms, and we're going to cut a door in between the wall, the two rooms, so Mr. Bancroft can observe students?
He will properly space students and monitor them, and he needs both of those spaces to do some of the, like, mannequin work, but when he's just instructing... just instructing in the classroom, he would be fine to just have them in there. So you're talking a dynamic class where they have to be able to spread out and have more room for certain types of instruction, but when it's just classroom instruction, they would be on the one side. So yes, he would need that space to be able to properly instruct with the mannequins and keeping kids spaced utilizing their equipment.
So this is strictly for COVID, correct?
Um, I think that the space in the rooms would need to be utilized even without COVID in order to, because you're talking stretchers, large equipment and all that, but um. I'm sure he could probably squish them all into one room if they really needed to. I didn't ask him that question. I know that we want to be able to space people out appropriately for lessons now with COVID. So that's the most important part of what we're addressing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pat, can I add, add just?
Go ahead Scott.
Um, Joe, part of the, the challenge we've had is we've really seen a significant shift from Mr. Bancroft's courses that he used to teach, which all focused on video production into the EMT and CERT programming. So this year, for example. Paul had well over 100 requests for CERT and many more requests for EMT than we could handle. What he, what he did, and, and we have had very, very few requests for video. So that, that program focus has changed, one, due to the program that he's brought into us, but also due to student interest. You know, we're seeing a shift in, in where student interests lie. This past year, while we were still in school, Paul was able to use the video production facility to do a lot of what Pat just described. It gave him a room to do some teaching and it gave him some adjoining rooms where. He could supervise students in doing some of the lab and hands-on type things. The problem that we're in right now is that the video production room, although it was okay, the beginning of last year is absolutely unusable when we're talking about distancing kids. It's a very small room. Like you, you can't, you know, you really can't be more than three feet from anyone at any one time. It's such a narrow space. So. Part of the reason for looking for a different space for Mr. Bancroft was so that they could spread out and moving to these two rooms provides them with a perfect kind of classroom space and a lab space. They're, they're not two full-size classrooms. They're two smaller sized classrooms, but a big piece of it is that, you know, opening the rooms, the door in between them for constant supervision as much as anything. So part of it is related to COVID in a, in a roundabout way, in that the room that he's been working in really is no longer suitable when we're talking about students being distanced. We've actually made the choice, Paul in his original schedule had one video production class, but we realized that there's no way we could run that class and have students distanced from each other. So. We had the requests and up requests, so we added an extra session of the, the CERT programming.
All right, thank, yeah, that, thank you Scott. I, I keep thinking about this room in the middle school that has the dividing doors that, I, I've been in that room many, many times and I think it would be an ideal room for Paul. And I support Paul's, Paul's class. I mean, it's a, it's a phenomenal class. Isn't there, where we've had some of our, our, our cave meetings and for the board on Saturdays, isn't there a, a room down there where they served a lunch that has three dividing rooms? Isn't that room, is that room being fully utilized?
Yes, it actually is utilized all the time and Dr. Sarus, you could speak to more of that for you. That's called the team room at the middle school.
The team room is constantly booked. We actually had the school breakfast program in there this year, this past, from January till March. But we do utilize that room for classes. It's a, it's a big open space, you're correct, and we use it for the different teams will book the room during the school year as well as a special education students use for different activities and groups. Use it for different meetings when we can't, when we have too many people for our own conference room because we have a small conference room. So it, it, it's, it's utilized a lot. We've talked about it in the past about making it into a classroom, but it's just used by everybody so often that we decided against it.
Thanks. I'm all good Stephanie, thank you.
Is there any other questions for, or discussion points? No? Okay, we're going to go to vote. Um, Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm abstaining. Motion passes. Okay. And last but not least, facilities. Okay, so for the needs, elevator repair. The Kubota tractor. If, if the, correct me if I'm wrong, if the Kubota tractor is purchased, then there's no need to aid the turf tires for the Kubota, or do we still need the turf tires?
No, we do not need the tires if we buy a replacement.
Okay. Next is backup battery for headroom rack. Two-way radios, replacement paint machine, clear plexiglass dividers. For the school offices, tried and touch free cleaning companion. The 60-inch heavy-duty power broom for the John Deere.
That's it for needs.
And that's it for needs. So the motion would be for. Do, would we be adding in the, the facilities sped business down at the?
I can speak to that if you would like to, because it's primarily a facilities project that is in, is something that is needed for special ed and the business department. So if you would like Stephanie, I can explain that.
Yes, please do.
Okay. In the, this year's budget, we passed and added a .6 school psychologist, something that we greatly need within the district to help make sure that we're meeting the mental health needs of our students. The pupil services department in the guidance suite area of the high school does not have any room for this person as well as some of our other people that either float between the two buildings or are part-time to actually meet with students. So we're lacking office space in the guidance suite at the high school. The one office space that we could use is currently used by the accounting office. It holds three people in a single office space. Our accounts payable, the head of our actual accounting office and our payroll person. They're in one room together. One of those people also has health issues that as they'd be coming back to work, it makes it absolutely impossible within that room to socially distance appropriately three people in this small room. So because we need to be able to find a larger space for the accounting office, we need a, desperately need an office space for our pupil services department, the new .6 school psychologist, as well as other pupil personnel service people. We are making the request that we would move the accounting office out of their current office to a classroom down at the. Far end of one of the high school hallways where we could. Do some construction in the room. We would have to do a little bit of construction around. There's a door that needs to be closed up, so we're going to open a door one place and close another. We have to do some data cabling and ports. We have to do a little bit of work on the. Panel as far as surge suppression goes and some floor work as well as some furniture for that space to move in, in there. And that is what the 25,447 would cover. The revamping of that space, which benefits pupil services by giving them office space in the guidance suite and benefits the business office by giving them a larger space that meets both their health and their space needs.
Okay, thank you Pat.
You're welcome.
So that, that number of the 25,447 is not part of the 81,971 for facilities, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be, it's much like we just did with the other one, it would be for the, the previous needs for facilities of 81,971 plus the 25,447 that just came in.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the facilities needs of 81,971.
Kathleen seconded.
Is that without the 25,447?
That's without the 25,447. I think we should discuss that more.
Okay, discussion?
So just a question. This is Ben. So the 1,900 for the tires is out of that, is not in that 81,971?
Correct. I, I, that 81,971, when I calculated it, I did it based on option, I think it was listed as 2B, which does not include the tires. It is the replacement tractor. And I did it as option two of 2B, which is the 45,580, $580.22 minus the 14,000. I took the lower amount on the trade-in just because I can be a pessimist about it and say they're going to give us less.
That was my next question is how accurate is the trade-in amount that's listed there?
Mr. Schlehouffer, can you help to provide some guidance on that?
14 to 16 is, is something that they're willing to give us. When they come out, they'll be able to dictate whether to be closer to the 16 or lower to the 14 when they physically see the unit.
So they haven't, they haven't inspected it yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Done visuals through pictures.
My other question I, I sent in at the end of the week was regarding a backhoe. Can this new tractor take on a backhoe and were you able to find out any prices on that?
I did not find out prices on that. That was not a request that came through the needs of the facilities department. So at this point, we did not pursue that further. We didn't, we believe that we could utilize a backhoe when needed by working with the town of Hebron and not have to be able to purchase it and or store equipment that we would not need on a consistent, regular basis, which I know is something we've talked about.
And how about a list of used tractors? Did we look into that at all?
I do not have a list of used tractors at this time.
Any other questions or discussion points? Okay, are we ready for vote then? Okay, Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Scott?
Hey, hey Steph, just because we went back and forth, th- this vote is on the eight, the, it's not on the screen anymore. The, the.
Hold on, 81, 81,971 without the facilities sped business room of, that's listed at 24,447.
Got you, just the 81,971.
Just the 81,971.
Yes.
Judy?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So that would be. Six yeses, three nos. Motion passes. Okay. Now, if we want to go back.
Stephanie, we didn't do art.
Oh. Okay, that's right. There was a, a late art one. I don't have.
That came in. I've got a, I'm, I don't have that one pulled up, so I'm going to have to pull that one up. It was for equipment, additional teaching and learning equipment for students in the classroom due to the COVID-19 and they cannot share equipment when they're back in the classroom.
Yes, I remember that. I don't have the number in front of me however.
It is $4,075.31.
Oh, we do have it, yes. Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to spend?
To accept the art needs of $4,075.31.
Second?
I second Jessica.
Discussion? No discussion?
Just a question. I'm, I'm a little bit confused on this COVID stuff. I know it's needed, but we could apply this to everything. What is, what is the threshold for, is it needed? Because we don't really know what we're doing with, but if, this is a what-if plan, right? So I mean. I guess I'm a little confused on why we're going to spend money on something that's a what-if.
Even if for the art supplies, even if for this one, we don't come back to school, students would be able to use these at home, much like they have with other art supplies to be able to do the work at home. And then when they return to school, they would still have their own set of equipment. So in order for, in particular in this curriculum to move forward, it makes sense that we have these supplies for students to be able to do their art classes regardless of where they are, whether they're in school or at home.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion?
Just, this is Kathleen. Just based on what Joe was saying, I know we talked about flexibility. I think it's important that if we do not return to school, I know the governor wants us all to return to school, however, he has not said exactly, nor has the commissioner, what that will look like, that just as we are appreciative of what the staff is requesting and definitely appreciate their vision and looking forward, if these things are not needed, that we also rescind some of the suggested requests, funding requests. And we expect that the departments also take a look at that if, if there is no need for that, just as much as if they're looking forward and there is need for it. You know what I mean?
Yes.
So just some flexibility is also required on the staff thing as it is required of us in looking forward for funding. Based on the COVID pandemic.
And I think we're trying to be very mindful of asking for things that we know, we feel very confident would be needed regardless of the type of plan. We do know that as we move forward and we actually are given more direction and plans do start to come together, that we will be adjusting what we are looking to purchase and coming back to the board and explaining different purchasing needs we're going to have based on requirements that the, will come forward through this process. So I agree with you Kathleen, that flexibility and a lot of need for understanding that things are going to evolve over time and we don't have all the answers right now will be important for us all to remember moving forward.
Yes, thank you Pat. And I know the staff will do that and I know when Mr. Leslie takes over that he will report back to the board along with Eva regarding those changes if they are necessary.
Absolutely.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll take it to vote. Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, so the art supplies pass. Okay. Now. Now, we, if we want to go back and discuss any of the wants, the IT is taken care of. CTE is also taken care of. Is there anything, let's start with athletics for the want list. Is there anything that anybody would like to bring up as a want that they may, that they would like to add? We're at, we are, are we still at, no, we're a little over 2,200, 228,480.31 because we added a little bit from CTE. So we are.
I can work on that, Stephanie, and just give me one second.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Are there any, any suggestions to adding from athletics?
Stephanie, this is Vin. I think I'd like to see the wants get passed, except for the t-shirts, which I think we could do other, in, in other ways, in funded other ways. I'll speak to the championship banners. Those have been a, a thorn in everybody's side for a long time, and coaches have tried to do it themselves, and it really has been kind of piecemealed together. So I think I would like to see that get done in one fell swoop and, and take down the old cloth ones that are, you know, haven't been updated in a long time.
My question is, do we need to do it now? With, with an economy, when, when so much is, is unsure about next year and the budget and families working, do we need to update the banners this year?
That's a, it's a good point, but that, that point comes up every year, and every year, you know, again, it's, it's been piecemealed together. So, you know, there is, there is funds available, and, and this, I think this is an opportune time to, to, to get it done. And with the, with the gym floors getting done, and, and getting a new makeover, I, I think it would be, you know, those, those cloth banners have, have lived a long life, and, you know, they're in, they're in need of upgrade.
So Vin, you're saying you want all of the wants except for the t-shirts. Do our, do our players, and the players are going to be the only ones that benefit from this, do they really need the padded chairs for indoor competitions?
I, I'm, you know, from my personal point of view, I've seen the cafeteria chairs rolled in and out. And again, it's not, it's not great for the, the, the look of the school, and also for the athletes that are playing. Do they work okay here? But again, with everything that's going on with the gym, it would, it would be, it'd be good to get it done.
I, I think we need to be in the best possible position financially for our towns come next year. So I have concerns about that. Is there anybody else who wants to join in the discussion?
Yeah, this is Jessica. I, I'm kind of where you are, Stephanie, right now, on really focusing on what the school needs. There's still so much uncertainty, and I, I know unemployment's very high right now, but I really think that there's going to be a lot of businesses that, if there's a second wave, or as time goes by and some of the loans run out, that they're not going to survive. So I really do think we need to be very cognizant of what could happen right now, and, and really focus on what's needed.
Stephanie, I just, I put in the comment section, an update for the board. As of right now, the board has approved $204,729.31 in end-of-year spending.
Pat, I didn't come up with that total. Can you give me your totals, please?
Um, 195,2631, the entire needs column, plus 1,696 from CTE, plus 12,507, even I did it each twice.
Where's the 12,500? I thought that was in CTE already, no?
No. We voted on that separately, if you remember. We voted on the CTE plus 12,507.
So 28,351 plus the three, that's 12,500?
28,351 plus 12,507, yes.
Is we did not pass the 25,400 whatever for the, the office?
You've only done, you've did all of the needs, 1,000, 109,526.31, plus an additional $1,696 from CTE, plus an additional 12,507 from facilities and CTE. Is a total of 204,729.31.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments on the wants of the athletics? Okay. The only way I can, I can see doing this is to go item by item. Um, does anyone else have any suggestions? No? Okay. So let's start with the t-shirts. Does anybody want to make a motion to purchase or not to purchase the t-shirts? Anyone?
You want to just do it individually and make emotions, or we just, is that how you want to do it?
I think so, because I think there's going to be some disagreement as far as chunking the whole thing. So I think we should go item by item. Unless somebody else wants to come up with a proposal to maybe group a couple things, like group the basketball shooting machine and the pitching machine together, and group the, the chairs and the banners, signage, t-shirts. I don't know.
Well, let's go the way you want. I'll make a motion that we approve. What's the amount for the t-shirts?
Well, there's two different ones. There's, there's t-shirts for just the athletes for $2,273.75, or for the entire student body at $4,269.35.
I'll, it's, I'll go for the all-in, it's just for discussion. So I'll vote, make a motion that we approve $4,000 for student body t-shirts.
Rob will second.
Discussion?
Can, can someone explain the t-shirts, please?
So at the last meeting, Judy, Dan wanted to get t-shirts with the new mascot on them and hand them out to all the students as a gift for coming back to school.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we'll go to a vote. This is to purchase the t-shirts for the student body at 4,269.35. Sue?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Judy?
I, I'm going to abstain from all of the wants, because I would like to vote yes, because I don't want to, with the economy and us not knowing everything being so uncertain, I, I don't feel like I can vote yes, but I don't want to vote no. So you don't have to ask me on any of the wants. I'm, I'm abstaining on all of the wants.
Okay, Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
I'm going to abstain as well.
Joe?
I'm going to vote no.
And I'm a no. So that's one, two, three, yeses, one, two, three, four nos, and two abstentions. So motion does not pass. Okay, next item is the championship banners for $7,655.00. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the championship banners, approve the replacement of the championship banners for $7,655.00.
Second?
I'll, I'll second Kathleen.
Discussion? No discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Sue?
No.
Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Judy is going to abstain. Rob?
No.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a no. So that's one, two, three, four, five nos, one, two, three yeses, and one abstention. Motion does not pass. Next is the promotional motivational signage for gym and P-E athletics in the hallway for $3,623.00. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Stephanie. It's Kathleen.
Okay, second?
Second, but Joe.
Discussion? No discussion? Okay, next vote is Sue?
No.
Um, Vin?
No.
Scott?
No.
Judy is abstaining. Rob?
No.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Joe?
No.
And I'm a no. Motion does not pass. Okay, next part, shootaway basketball shooting machine for all four basketball teams, middle school and high school, for $6,618.00.
Stephanie, the next one was the custom padded team chairs and the shootaway?
I'm sorry, I skipped it.
It's small, it's, it's just in there.
That's what I get for putting two pages on one sheet. Okay, um, so the custom padded team chairs for $3,836.47. Motion?
Joe here, I'll make a motion, we, for the custom padded team chairs for indoor competitions.
Second?
I'll second, Vin.
Discussion?
Stephanie, I'd like a little bit more clarification on this from the athletic director, if he's still on the call. What exactly we're, we're trying to do here? Because most of the time, the kids are sitting on the bench, aren't they? Or they have chairs, I'm not sure. Yep. No, in the high school, they have chairs, and, you know, what's, what was done this year, and I'm assuming all years past, is it's the cafeteria chairs, just get rolled in from the cafeteria. So it's those navy blue hard plastic chairs. So this, this would be to replace those with something that's, you know, really solely for gym use. At the, at the middle school, they sit on the benches, but at the high school, they're in chairs.
Thank you. Dan, could you tell us where the, where the new chairs would be stored, if, if you were to get them?
Sure, I'd store them in the, the back storage room for athletics, which comes through the boys locker room. Does that make sense?
So is that, you have to get there through the, the locker room?
Yes. But you could put the chairs on a, on a single rack, and you could easily maneuver your way through.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? No? Okay. Be voting on the chairs. Sue? I saw Sue left and came back on. Is Sue there? Okay, Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Judy abstained. Rob?
No.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
Abstain.
Joe?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a no. So that would be.
Stephanie, I'm a no too, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you, Sue. Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five nos, one, two yeses, and two abstentions. So we, the motion does not pass. Okay, next is shootaway basketball shooting machine for four, for all four basketball teams, middle school and high school, for $6,618.00. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second?
Kathleen will second.
Okay, discussion? No discussion?
I just, Stephanie, real quick, Vin, I think the athletic director said that the teams were willing to fundraise for, for this, in order to get this machine. So obviously, it's important to the teams in terms of their training. And again, you know, the teams do not have that much money, and, and going out to fundraise at this point in time would not be, you know, a good idea, or obviously, they couldn't do it at all. So I would just bring out that point. Not sure if Dan had any more information on that.
Yeah, I, I can elaborate. So all, all four of the, the coaching staffs, the two middle school and the two high school had come together and talked about it. And the truth is, they actually do have enough now in their student activity funds for it, but it would deplete their student activity. And, you know, so essentially, I, I think with the surplus money, it, it would be a, a good gesture to say, we'll, we'll buy it as a piece of equipment for the four teams, especially because it really is going to be used by, you know, both the middle school and the high school team. So a, a number of kids are going to get to use the machine. So for me, if, if we could purchase it as school equipment, rather than having them purchase it with money that they've fundraised that, you know, could go towards something like warm-up suits and stuff like that, I, I think it would be a nice gesture on our part. But, so that's, that's my clear, clarification.
Dan, would these, would these machines be used in PE classes?
It's, it's, so it's, it's one machine that, that is movable. You know, I, I would never have a problem with the phys ed class using it if they wanted to, if they came to me and asked, hey, can we, you know, let some students use this in PE class? I would have absolutely no issue with it and say yes every single time. But the truth is, I, I don't foresee it being used in PE class. I don't, I don't think it's something that really fits into the curriculum there. But, but again, I, I would certainly, I mean, almost any of our athletic equipment, I would be willing to, to share with the PE staff, so.
Any other discussion or questions?
Um, it's Kathleen, I just want to thank Dan for saying that, because anything we purchase for the athletic department is for the district. Um, it's Kathleen. I just want to thank Dan for saying that because anything we purchase for the athletic department is for the district. It's not solely for one department. So thank you for making sure that anything we purchase is for everybody and not just for one group of students, because we never know what can happen.
Anything else? Okay, we'll bring it to vote. Sue?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Judy is abstaining. Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So we have one, two, three, four yeses, one, two, three, four nos and one abstention. Let me count that again. Two, three, four nos, one, two, three, four yeses and an abstention. So it is a tie.
Uh, Stephanie, I have five nos. This is Karen.
One, two, three.
Sue, Scott, Steph, Rob, Jess.
Rob was a yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Then I'm wrong.
Okay. Do we revisit this at the end after we are done or? What do we do with the tie?
Stephanie, there's Robert's rules guidance on ties.
I'm not.
Stephanie, I can, why don't you, I'll look at that and look at your policy as well if you want to move on to the next one.
Okay, we'll come back to this one. Being my second meeting, I'm, I have to look that one up. So thank you for looking it up, Pat. All right, next one is pitching machine, baseball for $3,299. Someone want to make a motion?
Joe here, I will make a motion that we go forward with pitching machine.
And second?
Second, Ben.
Okay, discussion?
For me, this is also a safety issue. I throw a lot of batting practice. I've gotten hit before. Pitching machine, you can hide behind the net and feed it. Good working pitching machine is very important to a baseball team.
As far as safety goes?
Yes. Again, I've been hit a couple of times.
And just to clarify the one that, oh, sorry, Joe.
Oh, go ahead, Jessica.
I was just checking. So the one that we have isn't really functioning quite as it should be. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So when that happens, you end up with players or coaches throwing batting practice in the cage.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, that was going to be my point. You don't have enough people that can throw batting practice without a pitching machine. And, you know, that just comes through a safety concern for the coaches then because they throw their arms out, so.
I'll just add that these, some of these high school ballplayers are throwing in the upper 80s. And again, to get these guys ready to face competition like that, you know, none of the coaches, very few, if any, could throw anywhere near that. But the pitching machine could get it up there so that they could actually get some practice. And again, it's safety issue for the coaches. It's also, you know, a safety issue for the kids and their training and conditioning.
So if this is a safety issue, why is it on the want list?
I mean, it was, it was somewhat of a late request brought to me by the baseball coach or brought to Eva by the baseball coach. You know, we, he had mentioned it to me that the one they have is not functioning that well. And, you know, it was too late in the school year this year to purchase a new one. It was too late in the budget process to put it in the budget for next year. So I had kind of talked about maybe figuring out a way to fundraise or work with the booster club to figure out how to get one next year. But it, you know, the gentleman who made the points that it's a safety issue, that they probably know more about it. They probably know more about a pitching machine than I do, just based on their baseball experience and and what they've done, you know, outside of high school baseball. For me, I know that any quality high school program needs a good pitching machine. And I know that ours is not up to par right now. But again, you know, I kept it as a want because I do look at it like I'm looking at the basketball shooting machine. You know, it's a high-quality item that's going to enhance the experience for the kids.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote.
So Stephanie, I'm going to vote on this one.
Say that again, Judy?
No, I would vote yes on this one because if it's, I heard what Rob said and the safety issue makes me think that it's not for me, how I'm defining wants and needs, I would call that a need. So I'm going to vote yes. I'm just saying I'm not abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Sue?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy is a yes. Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on this one. So eight yeses and one no. Motion passes.
Stephanie, I can go back to the other one if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So it says, first, when boards of education act on a matter, a simple majority vote of those present in voting suffices to pass the measure. So you have to have a majority affirmative. You do not have a majority affirmative, so therefore that would not pass.
So let it be known that the motion for the basketball shooting machines did not pass. Okay, that is, that is, that is the end of athletics. So the pitching machine for baseball is the additional want that is going to be going on to the 1920 end of year list.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Moving to a total of this point that the board has approved of $208,028.31.
Can you repeat that?
That is a total of $208,028.31 approved.
Okay. All right, moving on, I'm going to leave facilities for last. Going on to health and P E, the wants are, okay, well, let's go through each one of them, I guess.
My suggestion, Stephanie, and I don't know how the board feels about this, for the CTE budget, which was actually $2 more than this, the board passed it in its entirety. I don't know if that's something the board wants to look at since you're only talking $1,694. Or if you want to go through them line by line, it might be worth trying a full motion to go with all of it and then if not, go through it.
It's really not a large amount.
I'll make a motion to accept the P E health at $1,694 in its entirety.
Second, Ben.
Discussion?
Could someone just highlight what is on that list?
Sure. It's yoga mats, 30 of them for the high school. Replacement portable speaker, bicycle trainers, mountain bike for bike trainer, plyo box set. It's for a fitness unit. Resistant band set. Oh, no, sorry, scrap the resistant band. That was a need. EVO ball for the fitness unit and a tough rollout mat for high school and middle school.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Sue?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
I'm abstaining.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes.
That puts one no and one abstention. Puts the board's total at $209,722.31.
All right, moving on to facilities. Okay, the first want is our standing desks for the math classes, our math department. I don't see a total in the paperwork.
It is $6,000. I have it up on the screen.
Okay. All right. Is this something that they've had all along? Like, some classes have had it and some classes haven't?
We purchased standing desks starting this year in order to meet the various learning needs and styles of our students. We don't, not all classrooms have them. We asked departments who thought they wanted to have them for students in their classrooms to volunteer to start to use them in their classrooms. A lot of teachers have found that they have really benefited students who need to, much like some of us sometimes, stand instead of sitting through classes. And so they're adding more of that to, the math classes have found in particular, they'd like to utilize standing desks for their students more.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
Joe here, I'll make a motion for standing desks.
Second?
Rob will second.
Discussion?
Kathleen, just as with anything that the staff is requesting for COVID, if we do not return to school, this is another one of those things where we have to ask the staff to think about, you know, is this a necessity, a necessity, sorry? If we are, you know, based on what the commissioner or the governor suggests that, is this something we need?
So again, Kathleen, this is a reminder, this is for end-of-year spending for 2019, 2020. These items have to be invoiced by the end of June and purchased by the end of July. So right now, from the meeting I was on today, the best that we might hear a draft of a plan from the governor would be last week or so of June. So approving this types of items right here, this one in particular, we would not be able to necessarily give this back and get something else in the timeframe that we would need to follow for end-of-year closing out of the fiscal year. And Eva, if you have something more to add, I'm happy to add more.
No, I support exactly what you've stated. So yes, so by the statute, we have to have everything encumbered by June 30th and receded and invoiced by July 31st needs to be paid out. That's.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more discussion?
Stephanie, Joe here. I've been, I have asked and I know it's probably difficult to try and get answers based on what Eva and Pat just said, but you know, this would be very helpful if we could have some guidance from the state at a level. I haven't seen anything other than some other gentleman that wasn't work for the state that Eva gave us. Can't we get a direct, some kind of direction from the state? Are they going to expand, extend this deadline? It would be very helpful if we could have at least something in writing from some authoritative person in the state of Connecticut that would allow us to either say, nope, it is June 30th and maybe we have it. I just haven't seen it. But it would help us, this board, make, I think, better decisions. So has that been done? Have we talked to the right people in the state of Connecticut that can give us with 100% surety that June 30th is the day?
Eva, I know you've had some conversations, I believe, with Kathy Dempsey. Can you provide any more insight into that question?
Because it's a state statute that basically states that our fiscal year ends on June 30th. Outside of the executive order from the governor, which has not come to fruition, there is no other extension provided in that timeframe. So I'm not sure how else to answer the question. I know originally back in March, that was tossed around. But based on the reaction from the Connecticut municipal conferences, CCM, and many towns anticipating larger surpluses, there was a push to try to even revoke the 1% and the 2%, but that also didn't come to fruition. So I'm assuming that the governor decided not to make a motion one way or the other and let things roll out as they will in a normal year. So that's my opinion in the matter, but that's basically, no, no one has made an extension of any one shape or form to extend the fiscal year.
Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. We understand, and Eva's done a great job of, she provided the statute and the regulation. The question, I think, is not, is there an extension? What I'm wanting to know and ask at the previous meetings is there's nothing that can stop the school from submitting and requesting an extension individually, in the same way that you can ask for deviations and extensions on anything else. And we're certainly, the way things are playing out right now, we're not going to get an extension if we don't ask. So I think the discussion is not, Eva's got the regulations, Pat, we've seen them, and she sent them to us all. We have those. So we know there's not one in place, but we, this region, has not requested one. And because of the pandemic, I think it would make sense to to request one. And I would further say that in the spirit of, I've heard so many of my fellow board members talk about the if not this, then the other thing. If we put in an extension, there's a lot of ifs here, and pass what we're passing this evening with the caveat that we're waiting for the result on that. You could essentially have a without extension vote, meaning normal regulations and we have to have everything encumbered by the 30th. Or what if they came back and said, sure, you can have 90 days then? A lot of the questions and mystique that we have around COVID or not COVID, going back to the building or not going back to the building, all those things would have gone away. So it's my comment.
The board can make a motion to direct the superintendent to do just that if the board wishes.
I'll make that motion. We we direct superintendent to um. Look into with the state of Connecticut and request an extension um for. Year end, June thirtieth for ninety days.
I would just, I would second that with a friendly amendment to uh just take out the look into, just straight up say, make the formally request. A ninety day extension uh beyond the the June thirtieth statutory requirement.
I accept that.
Discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Sue?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion passes.
So I guess my question is, at this point, what does that mean for any of the further motion going forward for any of these items?
I would say, this is Joe, we continue on this path, that way we utilize our time wisely. As you, you know, we're we're making progress. Um, and if it changes, then I think we would uh. Reevaluate.
I I wouldn't.
What that means as far as what your motions will look like moving forward now and what. I I I, we would need real clarity to understand what any motions moving forward after. This means around timelines and spending and approval of items.
I'll I'll give it another shot, Steph. I wasn't super articulate. I think we should. Continue with the path that we were on, pretending that that motion that was just made, like it didn't even happen, and have those numbers and go through all of those votes. And then have have, I don't know what to call it other than a contingency, but we need to submit this request and obviously the state of Connecticut. Um, I mean, it it sounds super complicated, but this is a a couple line request and there's, there's a little bit of time, so we would need, we we'd have to say, I I'm. I'm not here to write the memo, but would have to say right up front that. The statute says encumbered by the thirtieth, so if it's not, we we just, we need a, we need a decision as quickly as possible.
And if the state doesn't get back to us by what date, would we then move forward with what we are already doing? And does that, does that mean for anything that we vote on now moving forward? Or are we talking about all of the items that have previously been approved in this meeting?
I I'm talking about the whole thing that we close this meeting with all in, not not a before or after this vote that we just had. So it would be, but but again, that's, that's just my, that's my thought.
Can you clarify that for me, Scott? I don't understand, close the meeting with what, with all in. I'm I'm not understanding. So we're going to tomorrow submit to the state of Connecticut and form a request for a year end extension of ninety days for the fiscal year.
How about we do that, Pat, for any monetary uh that's left that we didn't approve tonight? Whatever we approve tonight, you can go ahead and do your P O's and all your orders, but any of the excess money that's left over, we ask for an extension on that money. I believe that's what Scott and Joe are trying to get across.
Is that, Scott, what you were saying?
That that's actually different than what I was thinking, but that makes sense to me. I'm I'm fine with that. It's, it's just trying to um. We we've had adjustments to literally everything else that everyone's done as a result of the of the pandemic. It's it's really odd to me that. That the state wouldn't look favorably on a relatively reasonable request like that for a small extension so that these funds are. Uh, used in a thoughtful way and if necessary to facilitate uh the return to school that they have not yet defined for us.
So then my understanding is, we are going to continue down the path that we have been on and finish standing desks and all the other facility stuff. Everything that is approved tonight, we will go forward with writing the P O's, getting that all moving. Any extra money that is left is what we will, we are requesting the extension for from the state to be able to make decisions around for other things. Is that what I'm understanding?
Pat, this is Joe. My concern is, is the COVID stuff. I, we're we're approving a lot of stuff here for COVID. We've already approved. I don't know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars last month for COVID. Again, I I want to make sure we respectfully utilize the taxpayers' money wisely. I would hopefully think that someone can give us a reasonable um before June thirtieth decision, yea or nay on that. And um and if it comes back ninety days, I think that would save us a lot of uh, you know. Uh, spending on on some of these items that we have to do for for the COVID situation. That's my concern.
So again, you're saying something different than what I heard Rob say, and I'm not exactly sure. The majority of what we've approved tonight is not COVID based. It is, so would we still be moving forward with everything that we've done tonight, regardless of this request?
Well, you have a, you have a mix of COVID in there, you're right. You have some COVID and you have the majority that is, I think the majority of it is, is moving forward. A baseball machine, uh, you know, the other stuff, the I T stuff is, uh, the I T stuff is COVID, correct?
It's both.
Yeah. So I I I.
I just want to.
I would agree with, I would agree with Rob's present, in Rob's idea and 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 go with it until we get to, we, hopefully we get an answer. I would, I would move forward with what we're doing tonight and say yes.
Okay.
I, I have um, I guess a a question. I, it, it's been a long meeting. And Kathleen, I thought, had some very good points, but I didn't take perfect notes. I felt like there were a few COVID things that we um. That we did put forward or agree to and that. It, you know, like the the basketball, the pitching machine would stay, but that's not COVID related, but I I felt like there were a few things. Could someone look at what we actually approved with that kind of lens and see? If if we did approve things that um were COVID, because I thought what Kathleen said made sense. Does anybody know what I'm talking about? I, Kathleen, there were a few things early and I I was taking notes, but I'm not sure what they were. That um Kathleen's point of that depending on how school opens, we might need money differently. Or if we were buying things for COVID that we wouldn't end up needing on guidance. That that could be, um, then we wouldn't proceed with those things. Were any of those passed?
They were. The art supplies in C T E, that special mannequin, as well as some of the additional cleaning materials were COVID based. Um, in facilities, the cleaning, the cleaning, I gotta get the thing in front of me here. The, the, hold on. Oh, okay, yeah. The um. Plexiglass, the Trident Touch.
The Plexiglass dividers.
The Trident Touch. So the, the, I guess the the concern I have is, I just want to make sure. And when we finish this meeting, and now we're adding this whole idea of asking for an extension. We know we have a limited amount of time to get all these P O's in the system and get this done. So that we don't miss our June thirtieth deadline, regardless of what the state does. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the action is that myself and and the department has. And and the business department are taking at the end of this meeting, given this motion that was just made. I would just like clear an explicit motion on what, so we can finish this if you want, Stephanie, go through all these items. But by doing that, we're stuck on the standing desks and standing desks are, I think, where we're stuck, because as Kathleen just said. If we're not coming back, we don't need standing desks in the building. It can be put off. So I don't know how, is that maybe it's just something that you say no to until. We know if we're going back or not, and then maybe we can take it out of capital nonrecurring. There'll be money left in there. I I mean. There's other ways you can get to it, but this is one of those items that. If we don't come back into the building, you're absolutely right, we don't need it. But I don't know that we're going to have that information in a timely manner, so.
But Pat, at some point, we're going to be coming back to the building and the desk could be utilized. So.
Right.
If we didn't come back in September and they came back in January, the desks would still be able to be used.
Absolutely. And I think the point part of it was too, that we might need monies for other things. Um, I totally agree with the standing desks. I think they are great for kids in the classroom and a very um. And for, an important instructional tool to have as an option. I just want to make sure that. We're clear on the fact that when these standing desks get approved, it doesn't say COVID next to them, but. We're we're moving forward with that regardless at the end of this meeting, if they're approved. And as well as all the other items. I just want clear direction.
So so that's, that is my question. Um, there is nothing now that we've approved that um. Well, you did, you named a few things, the the cleaning that was COVID related. I I think the the uncomfortable thing on this is, you know, and I like standing desks too. I I can agree, I just ordered some for something specific, but. You know, people's businesses are are suffering. Um, you know, I just talked with someone who, she doesn't even know it's a new business if she's going to be able to make it. And I I just feel like it's wrong right now. And and maybe that does make sense to pause it. I mean, I think asking for the ninety days really does make sense. It's unfortunate, it's so late, and we may not get any answer, but um. You know, I I I don't know if people are unemployed or underemployed, or I know some people are taking pay cuts in some industries. It it doesn't feel like the right time to be going forward with some of these things that I do think are worthwhile. I mean, and Kathleen, what what are your thoughts? Because you had the COVID kind of idea originally.
No, Judy, I agree with you. I think what we're all trying to do is mitigate between what we would normally approve for our staff and for our students. And then those things that we know, like the art supplies, which would not normally brought up, be brought up because of COVID, and we'd have to approve. Those types of things, we're all trying to be very conscientious regarding what our staff and our students need. And also what our, our community and our town can afford. So I think you're right on the mark there. I just don't think we have um, we should all be definite about what we're. About any of those things without something from the governor or the commissioner, and we know that we're all waiting for that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Point just to put out there for the board to think about in particular in relation to facilities. We know that the H B A C project is going to come in well under underneath what was um budgeted for. We're probably going to be somewhere in the sixty to seventy thousand dollars in the good there. We know that if um maybe those materials might be needed for COVID nineteen, they might be needed for things that maybe don't get approved. From this want list right now rather than need. So in particular, when it comes to facilities, I do think that there's some other options that might be available um. To consider moving forward for the board as kind of a a buffer to see what happens since we are in a kind of a um flexing unknown area at this point.
Okay, why don't, why don't we move, keep moving on this list? We're almost done. Um, and and then if the state grants us extra time, we can go back and revisit some of the things that we've cut. Or if something comes up that we realize that we need, um, there's more clarification in ninety days from the state about about the COVID. And and going back into school or not going back into school, then um, then, you know, we can look at some more things at that point.
Um, Stephanie, I just want to note that Sue um wrote in the text that she has to leave at nine. Will you be okay if Sue has to leave because her input is important?
Yes, um, I agree. So um, are we okay with moving on this, with this list and get as much of of input from Sue as possible until nine o'clock when she has to leave? Yes?
I'm with me.
Okay, let's move on. So we have a motion on the table um for the the standing desks for the math department. Um, we have discussed it. Does anybody have any other other things to say or ask? Okay, we'll go vote. Sue?
I think Sue had to drop already.
She did have to drop already?
She's not on the list.
Okay. Vin?
No.
Scott?
Nope.
Judy?
No.
Was that a no?
That was a no.
I'm sorry, it was muffled. I couldn't understand you.
No.
No, okay. Rob?
I'll go yes.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Joe?
I'm a no.
And I'm a no at this time. So um, motion does not pass. Next thing is replacement backpack blower for nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Joe.
Second?
Rob will second.
Discussion? No discussion? Okay, we're going to go to vote. Vin?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
I I apologize. What is it?
It's the um replacement backpack blower. Leaf blower.
Do we need it?
Definitely, I actually believe it's two.
Yes, you're correct. It's two of them.
Rob, I I mean, I would like to hear, like, I always look to Rob for those kinds of things because he knows a lot more about. That kind of thing than I do.
Okay, Rob?
Rob votes yes.
Okay, Judy?
I'll vote yes.
All right, Jess? Sorry, no. Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and two noes. Motion passes. Next is middle school science tables for twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. That would purchase sixty-five tables. Motion?
I'll make a motion to uh accept the middle school science tables.
Okay, second?
Seconded Kathleen.
Discussion?
My daughter was in some of these classes. I went there. They have duct tape on them. They are very old. I I think these should be replaced. I I think these should be replaced.
Anyone else? Okay, going to vote? Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Scott? Sorry, I was floundering with the mute button.
It's okay. Your, what was your vote?
Um, I'm going to abstain from this one.
Okay. And Judy?
I I am also abstaining. I and I just, I know sometimes you're supposed to give a reason for abstaining. I'm not taking a pay cut, but I know other people are and I I would love new tables, but not right now.
Okay. Um, Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
I abstain as well, but I would like an update on the tables and perhaps some pictures or things of what we need to replace. I understand it's a want as opposed to a need. Uh, however, keep in mind, I am 100% in favor of getting teachers what they need. So I I would just like a little bit more information about that.
Okay, Joe?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So we have one, two, three, four yeses, three abstentions, and one no. Motion passes. Okay, next, middle school team room carpet at $14,000. Motion?
Ms. Joe, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Rob will second. Could Pat move the screen up a little bit so I can read it, please?
All right, is any discussion?
I haven't been in there, so I'm just curious if anyone else has been and what what it looks like and if it does smell.
It smells. Sorry, it does.
Oh, that's okay. I'd like to know that. Thank you, Pat.
Pat, is it like the media center was a couple of years ago before we changed that out?
It it's not as, it does have a musty smell to it. It has a a dirty smell to it. I don't know what else to say. It just um, and it does have like a a door that opens to the courtyard that's next to that room as well and it's just, and it's unpleasant.
I would only add as a point of discussion, this school is 17 years old. If this is the original carpet, we we have to do a better job of rotating this stuff out in and out. I know it's been difficult over the years, but um, 17-year-old carpet. And this is all, this room is the is the team room I brought up earlier. They serve food in this room, so um just a point.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Uh, no, I'm I'm a no and and it's it's becoming more apparent as we go through here that I think what's causing a ton of us, at least myself, some angst is if we're in the wants column here and if there really was a need, then this should have been on the need and maybe should have been in the budget. But even more so, just specifically to this, if if we use this room for food and and serving food, then it probably shouldn't even be a carpet. It should be something other than carpet, but I'm a no.
Judy?
I I was actually going to ask the question is um, should something else be um, should it be replaced? I I know for a fact a 17-year-old carpet in a school building is not a good idea, but I it doesn't seem wise to replace it with carpet. Is that is that a consideration or is it just carpet for carpet? I I guess I guess if it's carpet for carpet, my vote is no, so no.
Hey, Rob?
Yes, and I agree with Scott. Maybe we should look at putting something else besides carpet.
Okay, Jess?
Same, I think if if it definitely sounds like it needs to be replaced with maybe something other than carpet, though.
So it would be a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Kathleen?
I abstain because I think it's a need and I think I agree with Scott and Joe in saying that anything that has lasted 17 years in a middle school should have been a part of a project that should have been replaced and should be looked at differently. We can't be putting the same carpet in there and expecting 10 years from now that we're not going to get the same smelly carpet that um we were playing, you know? We can't keep doing that. We have to look at that differently.
Joe?
Just clarify, this was in the capital budget requests for this year. That was not passed.
I see that, Pat. Thank you for reminding us of that, but I do think that we have to look at it differently. And that's part of the things that I um I'm hoping that our facilities can give us a better idea of what needs to be rotated. And then based on what we have, I mean, things are always built, like our homes, um, our apartments or wherever we are, where they're built with the ideal in mind. Of course, once you put people in there, those ideals are thrown out the window. So um, we need to kind of look at those things and can we project a little bit more? Can we have a vision about how those things should be replaced or upgraded to support our students and our staff?
Joe?
Well, I haven't heard from the middle school principal. I'd like to get his take on it and what the room is really used for and is also the facility director, since we have him here. I mean, I know it was in the capital. I agree with everybody's comments, thinking we're we're picking and choosing stuff here that, you know, we don't really understand all too well or high-dollar items. But I would like to just know in the middle school what this room is, what its function is. And then, and I think to Scott's point, um, is carpet really the right um replacement for this room? Um, and then that's going to sway me on how I'm going to vote.
That would be opening it up to discussion again. I think we would need to um start the vote.
I'll make it easy since it's getting late. I'm a no.
And I am an abstention because I think we should relook at the um the surfacing that we're putting in there, especially if food is being served. So we are at two yeses, three nos.
Do you mind if I change my, because that's really kind of what I'm thinking is that it needs to be relooked at. So I guess it would be an extension.
Okay. Okay, so we are at um, one yes, two no, three nos, and three abstentions. So it does not pass. Okay, the next one is um replace the walk-off carpet tiles in the middle school main entrance for $26,581. I'd like to pause for a second. Pat, are you um continuing to to tally where we are at this point?
I am. We're at $237,982.23. Two, two, three, seven, nine, eight, two, point, two, three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion for the um walk-off tiles at the middle school?
This is Vin, I'll make a motion that we accept, approve the walk-off tile replacement for $26,581.
Okay, second?
Rob will second.
Discussion? Does anybody have any questions for Mike Schleyhoffer or Dr. Shuusi?
Yeah, I sure can um, can they explain why this is needed?
So the walk-off tiles will clean, basically, they take off the, obviously, the dirt from the shoes coming in. If you think about it by the gym entrance, please, or by the main entrance as you're coming in even for athletic events, it's raining outside, then you want you want shoes to be clean as you walk into the building. You don't want people to walk into the gym floor, especially since we're doing the gym floor this summer, too. And the other is base, just basically tracking mud down the hallways. It does a nice job of taking it off.
And and what is the cost again?
$26,581. Now, this this would be put in next year's budget if um if it doesn't get passed now.
Yes. Or the 22, 23 budget, we'd have to one or the other, depending on what that budget looks like.
All right. Is there any other questions or discussion? No? Okay, we're going to move to vote. Um, Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Judy?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Joe?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a no. If we can put it off till next year, let's do that. Um, so let's see, the nos are one, two, three, four, five nos and one, two, three yeses. Motion does not pass. Next is folding tables. Um, a request for eight folding tables um at a total of $1,080. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Joe.
Second?
I'll second, Scott.
Discussion?
What what would they be used for?
Mike Schleyhoffer on?
Judy, they'd be used for additional events throughout the facility. There there's times where we have multiple events going on and and the gym needs folding tables, they need folding tables out by the track, tennis courts, the middle school needs some folding tables and sometimes we just don't have enough um of the event folding tables to go around.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Vin?
No.
Scott?
No.
Judy?
No.
Rob?
No.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Joe?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six nos and two yeses. Motion does not pass. Okay, next item, kitchen floor, $104,000. Any motion?
Ms. Joe, I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Rob will second.
Discussion? Any discussion or questions? I'm hearing none. Okay, we're going to go to vote. Vin?
No.
Scott?
No.
Judy?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
And I'm a no. So that's one, two, three, four, five nos and hold on. Four, five, six nos and two yeses. Motion does not pass. I believe that's the end of the list.
Stephanie, we still have the additional project for facilities, specialty in business of $25,447. I do think that Mr. Leslie is on and can speak to the necessity of this for the high school area. We would like to hear more from him as people said they wanted more information earlier.
Okay.
So Stephanie, do you want me to give you some background on this?
Yeah, give us some background on that.
And quite frankly, this is, this is one of those pieces I love not to have to speak for, but um I do believe that because of some recent um changes that it it has become a necessity. One of the challenges we've always had in the office area is the lack of adequate space for the guidance and student services areas. And we've made in, we've made a number of of changes. Some of you may remember, we've, we converted some of our conference rooms into offices. One of the challenges that we had from the day we moved into the building was there was really no space appropriate for the um accounting office. And so that was moved into their current space, which was actually designed to be a space for the school psychologists or one of the school psychologists. So we kind of lost that space from the get-go. Um, as a result, when we have needed additional space, we've had to eliminate conference rooms. Uh, we actually had to resort um when we had a guidance intern to creating some space using some um those partial um wall, movable wall um devices to provide some privacy. It was not perfect privacy. Um, and this past year, we created a new office for Sam Shattle um in an area that really was designed to be opened. Um, so the lack of office space has continued to be a challenge for us. With the hiring of the new school psychologist, it's it's critical that that person have access to our students in a confidential office. And unfortunately, because all of the other offices are either being used by a school counselor or a um another psychologist or the A H M social worker, we simply don't have office space appropriate for that. Hence, looking at the um accounting office, which is currently in that area, one of the challenges that, you know, I mentioned earlier that we we took a serious um look and made some changes to the video production curriculum because of the size of the room, being a room that's impossible to social distance. The accounting office, having three people in an office that really was designed for one, um, it it's it's simply impossible to have those three people working in an office, allowing them to be socially distant. Um, and my understanding is is one of the occupants that office has a um a health situation that would make it dangerous for them to be close to others. So in in looking at what space we had available, um, because I hope you understand, too, it's not like there's lots of vacant space in the high school. There really is no vacant space. The one area that we are are looking at is what used to be the cafe adjacent to the commercial kitchen area. It's a relatively large space. It would be more than appropriate for three office personnel to be able to work, um, because there is a lot of collaboration certainly that goes on in that office, the accounting office, um, and would provide them with enough space. It's not an area that's currently being used um as a regular classroom because, as you know, we we um moved away from the commercial foods program when we added all of the additional manufacturing and computer and engineering programs. So um it is a space that is currently being underutilized and it would be appropriate to convert that into office space. It's still relatively close by central office. um to convert that into office space it's still relatively close by central office it's close by high school teachers it's actually not that far in terms of getting from the middle school the accounting services needs to be accessible by everybody so it still maintains that benefit um it doesn't take an instructional piece out of the mix it provides a secure confidential space for the additional school count um psychologist that's been added um and addresses the issue of three people currently being in an office that doesn't allow for so any type of uh social distancing.
Thank you Scott. Does anybody have any questions for Scott before we move on to a motion?
Sure, I have one. So with uh the new use of this room will this make it so we could not bring foods back if we wanted to go down that road?
Um, no, I probably I think that um this doesn't impact the actual food prep area so adjacent to the cafe is the actual commercial kitchen and so so no it really doesn't totally put that out of the mix obvious so so students could theoretically still use that um you know obviously if you wanted to do a full fledged program you'd have to rethink the fact that you have an office next to it um you know when we when we first when the building was first designed and we had the commercial kitchen um that program was really never widely we we didn't have the enrollment in that program um to really justify it over those many years and some of you may remember you know that we had a two period class that spanned an entire year but because students in that program had to dedicate two full periods enrollment dropped and it really dropped down to four to six kids we cut it down to a half year a semester course but even there at the end we only had four to six kids that were interested in that program so you know it it doesn't knock that program out entirely but with the addition of the new programming that we've offered I I hard pressed to imagine between the increased enrollment and other programs and the decreasing enrollment that we're going to be seeing over the next ten years that you're gonna it that's ever going to be really a viable program um within the district. But again, we're we're not impacting the actual food preparation area it's just the area adjacent to that.
Is there any talk of uh working on a rotation with the three people in accounting to allow one to work from home? I mean, they just did it for three and a half months.
It certainly is an option that we could look at it it's not necessarily ideal with the amount of um unfortunately sometimes paperwork that needs to happen but it's something that we certainly could do but like Scott mentioned they also work very collaboratively on a variety of the tasks that they do because they intersect each other part of what we always want to make sure is that you have checks and balances of more than one person responsible for accounting service procedures so um they work with each other through those procedures. And I don't know if Eva has anything else to add to that.
So um honestly no that they would probably be fine rotating because that was a discussion point that we had with them but um if we leave him in the office that we leave them or that they're currently in that doesn't help with the school psychologist situation that's that's the driving factor.
Do we have any other options for other rooms Scott?
Um, you know, right now the only other rooms that we have that aren't being used in that area are three of the remaining four conference rooms one of the conference rooms in the um school counseling area is used specifically for um P P Ts for the you know the required meetings with um our special needs students we need a secure conference room to to hold those those that's something that's critical we have the large conference room um adjacent to my office in the high school and as I think you would know that that gets used throughout just about you know every day throughout the day the only other conference room we have is the one across from Chris um Mater's office in the high school area um that is it's used more for um student issues but also it's used to secure the testing materials that come in for the S A Ts um P S A Ts and that sort of thing um and it's it's right now it's being used by the um by the construction um folks so that is an area that gets used either there's a secure spot um the the problem with that too is it's right in the the main flow of traffic within the office probably not the area where you want to have your school psychologist when that's a um you know kids want um confidentiality when they're they're meeting with someone like that so we unfortunately we don't have any other unused space that lends itself.
How about in the middle school are you speaking only on the high school is there any other rooms in the middle school?
So this person might be utilized seven twelve and they if they need space in the middle school I'm sure that they'll be able to I and my Dr. Schuessy can speak to that the problem is that when this person would be working with high school students there's no place for them to meet with high school students Michael what about space at the middle school?
We I mean we do have an office that they can use in the middle school. It's a small office but it would be it has been used before for a part time school psychologist.
Okay, any other questions? Are we ready to bring this up for a motion?
I say let's bring it to a motion I mean a vote.
Okay, second?
Second, Vin?
Discussion? No discussion? Okay, we'll bring it to a vote. Vin?
I'm a yes.
Scott?
No.
Judy? Rob?
No.
Jess?
No, it sounds like there's probably some other alternatives that could be explored.
Kathleen?
No.
Joe?
I'm a no.
And I'm an abstention because I think maybe we could explore some more um so the motion does not pass. Six no's one yes and one abstention. Okay, I think now we can say we're through with facilities is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're done with eleven point three um and is our total still standing at two three seven nine eight two two three?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we're on to um subcommittee reports um facility safety transportation.
Stephanie, can I make a suggestion since this late can we just skip with the me the all of those those facility meetings and for another?
I am fine with that.
Like to make a motion we we uh we skip uh whatever number this is please.
My second.
Any discussion on that? No? Okay, Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes so we'll skip the reports from the subcommittees today that brings us to public comments are there any public comments?
This is Mike Morris I I don't want to spend a whole lot of time because I know you guys have been on for a long time but I would like to make one comment if I could.
Sure.
So um one of the challenges that I've come across is the over the last quarter which I'm sure quite a few parents have is uh really just the challenge of trying to help our students who are at home who normally would have all the fantastic you know uh educators that we have at the school system kind of helping them to navigate kind of the labyrinth of of assignments and requirements and all that other thing you know parents trying to do as as good a job as they can probably terrible poor uh stand ins but um I wanted to share a little bit of that and then just ask um to consider um some alternatives as we kind of move forward in this kind of incredibly difficult uh you know I I think uh the right way to say it is um situation with covid where we don't exactly know you know what's gonna happen no um and where I'm going with this is the software or whatever web products that we're using to organize and manage the students um distance learning is really something I think that we we have to address and I just prefaced this with this is absolutely not a criticism of anything that the student that the the faculty or the staff or anything that is done they they've been fantastic I mean it it came up fast and hard and everybody did the best they could with the resources that they had and the time that they had and I'm super appreciative of everything that the uh especially the teachers have done to try and keep things moving forward this is really just about trying to be prepared for what's probably gonna be a pretty uncertain future going forward with covid and and being prepared to maybe manage it a little better so students uh you know the organization part is less of the the challenge to being successful so just to preface this also I I have one student that was in uh Hebron Elementary and then one that was in Ram Middle School this year and they'll both be at the either the middle school or the high school going forward next year um and we are two working parents that were for the most part either you know working full time or in some circumstances uh I was eat you know away from home working so it was even more complicated trying to help them I think the biggest challenge that we had was that that you know the fifty percent of the success on on our kids doing well and and any of their assignments or their classes was highly dependent on their ability to kind of navigate or understand just the labyrinth of places where assignments were being doled out or where their key information for their subjects were stored knowing what the due dates were understanding what the method of the submittal was supposed to be and even trying to find um the the various rubrics or standards I think one of the things that would be very helpful in this this day where we have um lots of different web systems more oriented towards business and distributed learning and or distributed you know uh work in business um could be transferred to distributed learning and I'm sure there's other you know software systems and web based systems that can offer more of these kind of uh consolidated and uh more user friendly systems but I think the things that probably need to specifically be addressed is consolidating things that are that like the schedules for what is what is assigned the schedules for what is due you know each student being able to pull up some sort of a dashboard that says you know on Monday here's what you have due based on the classes that are assigned to you and uh in in within that you know here's what the standards are here's where the rubric is here's exactly how you're supposed to submit it um and then you know even possibly things like uh email and text notices that go out to the students as well as maybe even the parents that kind of give them an insight if for some reason they did they didn't catch something or they missed something you know those are really I think more the challenges that we face than it was about the actual subject matter that our kids were working on I mean I I I'll confess that some of the math and some of the science kind of passed me by too but but in general it was much more complicated trying to just manage the organization of of the schoolwork than it was you know trying to teach the subjects or try to help facilitate the learning of some of the subjects so I know there's been lots of discussion amongst some of the um the uh some of the administrators and certainly some of the faculty but I just wanted to lend my support and and add my two cents to that uh that effort.
Okay, thank you are there any other public comments?
Uh Stephanie you just probably need to get his name which I know Mike Morris from town I think he's at Hebron.
Mike Morris Hebron, yep.
Right.
Um Stephanie can I speak as Kathleen Goodwin um public comment?
Sure.
Um I'd like to um affirm what Mr. Morris is bringing forth and state that you know despite the fact that my husband and I are both in education um and we totally and fully support the Ram educators and the administration there we are both working parents and had it not been for our diligence and looking through some of the information um we would have had difficulty maintaining that um there is a privilege component to that and when I say that I say that privilege as in equity and for those families who may have not been essential may have been families that worked at home um and I I state that without discrimination to any family or family structure that the to this again in the fall there has to be some flexibility in student attendance in student um access um my son had one assignment where he needed to have balloons I needed to go to the store to buy balloons we don't have them in our home to create an assignment um there has to be some ideas um and empathy for those families who cannot manage all of those things at once and their students' grades cannot be impacted by family situations that are out of their control such as families that have jobs that travel families that were considered essential um workers and families that have a construct that may not support working within the home during the day the hours of the day that would normally be school hours. And again I respectfully thank the um educators of Ram who at the last minute delved into this situation to provide our students what they provided and did the best that they could it is at it is no one's fault it's that we just need to know and look differently at what we have done and build upon that to provide for all of our students in a differentiated manner.
Thank you Kathleen are there any other comments? Any other public comments?
Like to make a motion adjourn?
Um we do we need to um going there are no informational items numbers fourteen one or fourteen two and I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn and go into executive session was that that Vinnie?
Vin?
Yes, we're gonna be inviting the superintendent and do we need to invite Eva for for the
first part of it as well or just just you Pat?
Um it could be beneficial to invite Eva since she did the lion's lion's share of the legwork on the bus stuff.
Okay, so let it be known that we'll be inviting Pat and Eva into executive session is there a second on that?
Rob will second.
Any discussion? Okay, um all in favor?
Aye.
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 And we gotta go to the new link right so make sure we get the new link.
Yes, we need to go.
Today?
Yes, Pat sent it out right right um before the meeting this at late this afternoon. Okay, so we're we're going to be adjourning and going to the executive session link and then coming back to this one after we're done. Thank you everybody. Okay, I'm gonna take attendance see if we're all here Vin? Vin? Scott? Judy?
Yeah.
Is Rob here? Yeah, there he is. Jess?
Yeah, here.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe? Scott? Okay, I believe we're all present. Okay. First motion?
This is Vin. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the DACCO settlement agreement and give permission to the superintendent to sign said agreement.
There's a second?
Second, Kathleen.
Discussion? Okay, vote, there'll be a vote. Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Rob?
Rob's having difficulty.
Yeah, because Mike.
He can't, he says he can't talk.
Can he put in the chat box his answer, yes or no? And we'll record it as such because that does get recorded. Rob said yes.
Rob said yes. Uh, Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So unanimously. Okay, someone want to make a motion about interim principal?
Like to make a motion that Penny Brizjel be appointed as interim acting principal for the upcoming school year.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Rob? Yes. Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Unanimously. Someone want to make a motion on interim assistant principal?
So is it, is it interim 12-month assistant principal?
Yes, he's moving to 12 months. Okay, so appointment for interim assistant 12-month principal.
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Chris Mater as the interim 12-month assistant principal for the upcoming school year.
My second, Jessica.
Discussion?
The only discussion I would have is to be, we, uh, we did not broach that subject at the middle school level in case there's any overlap, but, um, I'm okay with the, uh, current proposal.
Okay. All right, ready for vote? Vin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Rob? Is it yes? Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Passes unanimously. All right, and finally, the, um, contract for the acting superintendent employment. Motion, that's right, Rob was going to read it and he can't speak. Oh, boy.
Can he redon-, can he drop off and re-uh, rejoin the meeting?
Rob, you know you're muted.
His microphone's not working, I guess. Did he try, can, what is it, Control 7, 6?
Control 6, I think.
Control 6?
Or Control D?
Is there a way for him to call into the meeting?
Yes, that was sent in the email earlier today. The phone number is in there as well, if you can find that.
I can try to make the motion if, um, if he can't call in. Rob, do you want me to try to make the motion?
Let me see if I can get him on the phone.
I just sent him the phone number.
Did the host of this meeting unmute him? Is that a possibility?
I cannot unmute, I can only mute.
You on, Vinnie? Yeah, I, I have him on the phone, so can you hear him, Rob?
You hear me?
Yeah, I can hear it.
I can hear.
All right, so I make a motion to accept the Scott Leslie agreement of $602.50 per pay period in addition to his 2021 principal salary, a $2,000 fringe benefit per principal contract, maximum of three days unused vacation time to be paid at the end of the year. Mr. Leslie will also receive mileage for school out-of-town services, registration fees, and a cell phone to keep on his person. Trips will need board chair approval. The chair can approve up to $1,000. Over $1,000 must be shared with the whole board.
I'll second. Vin?
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Vinnie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Do you need public comment?
Excuse me?
Is there a public comment or no?
Um, we did co-, public comments before executive session.
Comment afterwards.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second, by Joe.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, let it be known 10:54. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Good night.
Good night, thank you.